The opportunities for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Albemarle County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Albemarle County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters, which comments from the public will be received. And so with that, I'll call this meeting to order and establish a quorum. Madam Clerk, welcome back. And would you mind calling the road? It'll be good to hear your voice.
Can you see me?
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to say hello. I'm calling it on my iPad now. I'm going to turn it off and then I'll take the role. Thank you all for all your prayers and everything. It's good to be back.
Yes, you are missed. Welcome back.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, loud and clear.
Okay, good. I'll take role first. Mr. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Carazana.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Vivins.
Here.
Last but not least, Mr. Claiborne.
A present. Thank you. All right, as we move on to item number two on the agenda, other matters not listed on the agenda from the public. I have two individuals present that have signed up to speak. I will start with Mr. Neil Williamson.
Good evening. My name's Neil Williamson and I serve as the president of the Free Enterprise Forum, a privately funded public policy organization focused on central Virginia's local governments. Welcome, Commissioner Moore. Haven't had the opportunity to speak to this group in person since your ascension to the dais. In one of his most famous Cold War speeches, President Ronald Reagan challenged Soviet leader Mikhail Gorbachev to tear down the Berlin Wall, a symbol of the repressive communist era in a divided Germany. Just as the Berlin Wall separated the German people, the government mandated zoning code wall between commercial office space and residential uses is keeping families from their potential homes. No, it is not nearly as internationally significant, but it's terribly significant to those Almaral families who need homes in our community. Tonight, the Free Enterprise Forum is calling on the Albemarle County Planning Commission to tear down that wall that currently precludes residential uses in commercial office zoning. Such a change may significantly increase housing supply. The Free Enterprise Forum believes the wall between office, commercial, and residential can be torn down by simply adding five or 10 words to the Albemarle County zoning code to allow residential uses in commercial office zone properties. Hopefully, today's, tonight's discussion of the zoning code modernization will explain the, somehow you'll explain the benefit to me of the government restricting residential uses on commercial office property, especially existing commercial office property that today sits empty. I have yet to hear a sound argument that this is good government policy, considering the way the world has changed in the last five years. Since first proposing this concept earlier this month, the Free Enterprise Forum has heard how expensive such adaptive reuse could be. Changing an office use to a commercial use will require electrical plumbing and in some cases structural changes, all true. Not every office commercial property is ripe for this. The question is, should government's red tape add two plus years to any possible conversion? And who benefits from such delay? Just last week, Boston Mayor Michelle Wu indicated her city is moving forward with a tax incentive plan to encourage such conversions. Consider the primary neighborhood concerns you hear regarding any new residential development, traffic, parking, schools. Two of the three are alleviated by utilizing existing commercial office buildings that currently sit surrounded by asphalt empty. The time is right to ask your consultants to consider what language changes would be required. Rather than requiring a commercial owner to rezone an entire property, such a zoning ordinance change would allow a portion of the parcel to develop residentially, not the entire parcel. Many details to consider. If not now, when? If not you, who? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Williamson. Next up, I have Mr. Tom Oliviere. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
That was pretty close. Thank you. I'm Tom Olivier from the Samuel Miller District. I've come to thank you for the resolve you showed last month when you determined that the remainder of the comprehensive plan would be more open and deliberative with multiple work sessions for examining complex topics. Our best comp plans have come from such processes. In this age of multiple ecological crises, we need a plan that makes ecosystem protection a chief priority. Until now, the comprehensive plan update has pushed natural resources to the periphery. It's no accident that Albemarle County is cherished by so many residents and often rated as one of the best places in the country to live. This community is a good place to live, one in which biologically rich open spaces still exist next to an urban center, largely because of the thought and work and collaborations and difficult public decisions that have gone into the development of recent comprehensive plans. If we are sensible, as we work to deal with projected climatic and other disruptions, we will choose to build on the foundation provided by our current comprehensive plan. Bafflingly, the update process so far has seemed committed to cast aside current planned thinking and replacing it with a new plan organization that has nothing to recommend it so far, other than a promise that it will be easy to read. I look forward to more open and deliberative rest of the comprehensive plan update process. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online that would like to speak to a matter that's not listed on the agenda?
No, sir, there sure isn't.
All right, thank you. Moving to the next item, item number three, consent agenda. You'll see that we have two items on here. We have, one is the approval of the draft minutes dated June 27, 2023, regular meeting. And then we have CCP 2023 00001 Ragged Mountain Raw Water Pump Station. Does anyone, anyone want to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, Chair, I'd like to remove CCP 2023-1 Ragged Mountain Raw Water Pump Station from the consent agenda.
All right, what I'll propose to do then is we can remove that, and I would like to see if there's a motion to adopt the consent agenda with one remaining item. Sorry, counsel.
So, so what, what, what would happen, Mr. Chair, is that you would take a motion, or I guess Mr. Missile has moved to remove that item from the consent agenda. If there's a second, then there'd be a vote on removing that item from the consent agenda, and then a separate motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I was heading there. Thank you, sir, keeping me out of trouble. Is, is there a motion to adopt this new consent agenda with one remaining item, approval of the draft minutes, June 27, 2023?
First, we have to vote to take it out of consent.
So is it proper for me to?
Oh, so, so Mr. Missile has moved to remove that item, and so should there now be a second to remove that item? And then there'll be a vote on removing that item from the consent agenda.
Got it. Is there a second to remove that item from the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, here are none. Can, Mrs. Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Sure.
Mr. Missile.
I.
Ms. Firehawk.
Yes.
Mr. Carazana.
Hi.
Mr. Vivins.
I.
Mr. Claiborne.
I.
Thank you.
Now, is there a motion to approve the?
Oh.
Yeah.
The consent, Murray. Oh, sorry, a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
All right, I think Mr. Murray forgot to vote or wasn't called to vote.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Murray.
I.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve the revised consent agenda as presented with the meeting minutes from June 27?
They're moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
All right, Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Missile, I mean, Mr. Carazana.
Hi.
Mr. Vivins.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Missile, I'll wait for you to excuse us, and then we'll take action on, oh, I guess you have to say why.
Yeah, so the next item is, the next item up is the item that I removed from the consent agenda, right?
That's correct.
So the reason I did that is because I'm going to recuse myself from the vote on that due to the fact that the property is owned by my employer.
And I would also add, just for the record, that the Commissioner Missile has supplied in writing a statement under the State and Local Conflict of Interest Act that'll be filed with the clerk for the record.
All right, thank you. All right, so now we have that item CCP 2023 00001 Ragged Mountain Broad Water Pump Station. Is there a motion to approve as submitted?
They're moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
You can tell me who seconded it. I couldn't tell.
Commissioner Carazana.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Carazana.
Hi.
Mr. Vivins.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. And we'll wait for Mr. Missile to return. Thank you, counsel, for keeping me out of trouble again. As we move into the work session, we have ZTA 2022 00002 zoning modernization phase one. With that, I'll ask for the staff's report.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Leah Rumfield. I am a senior planner in zoning, and I want to thank you all for your time this evening. And reorganize my papers because they were printed out of order. Little printers. There we go. Okay. Um, so, uh, we do have a short presentation, a little bit less of a work session and more of a presentation about the progress of Phase One, the zoning modernization project. Um, we are still in the administrative and applications stage of the zoning modernization drafting process. We're trying to lay kind of a foundational groundwork of the zoning ordinance, the sections that are going to allow interpretation and understanding and requirements for all the other sections as they move forward and get a little more exciting when we go into districts and uses. Um, so we will go a little over some of the sections and speed through on some other ones. Um, but I will give you a brief overview. We will go into our current work, some examples of the ordinance changes we're looking at, and then we will look at some of the best practices as we've continued to learn throughout this process and some of our kind of guidelines as we're looking to the future phases. Um, the initial reset and kickoff meeting was August 22, 2022. That was discussing phasing for the new project, the intended schedule. Uh, when we realized this was a much bigger beast than we had originally intended. The, uh, the next following stages focused on interviews, gathering more stakeholder information. Um, we did have two-on-two interviews with the PC, and then we also had staff interviews as well, figuring out what do we need to do for this ordinance, particularly the administrative section, which is where we're focusing right now. Um, we did have a focus group with listening session with Cadre, the Charlottesville Area Development Roundtable in November. Um, Cadre, especially in the application process, is one of our key stakeholders, um, as they do, uh, work with a lot of applications. Uh, work session one with the Planning Commission was December 2022. Um, this section, uh, was focusing on the initial findings of our first round of public engagement, why we're doing this, what, what kind of the best practices are, what the biggest complaints were, um, and, uh, present the work that we had done with the Berkeley Group, which was a complete evaluation and a plan moving forward. Um, in January of 2023, we had the public open house. Um, when we had standing room only, uh, much, we needed a much bigger room than we had, uh, we had anticipated. Um, and that was really more for information sharing, getting people thinking about the project, letting them know something is coming down the pipeline, and then very, very generalized informal question and answer about what this process would look like. Uh, work session two was, um, the most recent time we were before the Planning Commission in March of this year. Uh, and that one, remember, we looked at Article One and Article Two of the proposed zoning ordinance. Article One was the general provisions, um, the establishment of why, how we have a zoning ordinance, how we have a zoning map, enabling legislation, um, interpretations, and then Article Two was powers and responsibilities of the zoning administrator, Board of Zoning Appeals, Architectural Review Board, um, and then referring to the establishment and responsibility of the Planning Commission in Chapter Two, which is not changing. So today, and then kind of moving forward, currently we are working on Article Three, which is procedures and requirements for applications, and Article Ten, which describes how to handle non-conformities. Um, these seem like they should be very simple, straightforward sections, and yet, uh, throughout the process, we have been taking all of the unwieldy ordinance that we have currently and kind of winnowing it down, realizing that this isn't winnowed enough, and then winnowing it further. Um, and as a result, we are focusing on these drafting guidelines. Um, number one is simplifying language and layout of the ordinance. Uh, I'll show you in the next kind of slides what that will look like. Um, we're moving the overly verbose language, um, and reducing the vocabulary words, uh, to make it as easy to read as possible. Uh, this increases the amount of white space on the page, um, and combining that with the graphical references wherever possible. Um, we're going to be putting information into tables, just making it a lot easier to read. Um, here on this slide, I do have two examples of the kind of graphical references we're looking at. The one on the left, which is blue, is a, um, it's a process graphic from the Henrico County adopted zoning ordinance. The more colorful graphic on the right is from the proposed City of Charlottesville zoning ordinance, which has not yet been adopted. Um, but these are the kind of process things that make people, um, that just give people an idea of what the process looks like. Flow charts are very easy to read. They're easy, instinctive to understand. Um, and then these kind of just accompany the text to make it easier to read. Um, also, we are standardizing the processes across application types. Um, and I'll show you an example of that in a minute. Um, and then also removing application requirements from the ordinance. And I think that you'll probably have some questions about that, but we will, again, get to that in just a second. Um, so currently, a ZMA or, or special use permit application requirement in the ordinance looks like this. Uh, it's very wordy. It's just a bunch of long typed out paragraphs. Um, and each different application type has its own standards in the ordinance that look basically like this. Um, anytime a requirement is updated, reworded, uh, thought better of, the ordinance has to go through a zoning text amendment process, um, which is, uh, I think legally a minimum of like four months with the advertisement requirements. Um, I think that you can possibly get it shorter, but it's very, very difficult. Uh, our new, sorry, um, so these are the requirements that go in, um, each application, and this is kind of a table to show which things go into each application, and this is actually only half of the table that's in the ordinance right now. Uh, so the new minimum submission standards are this. I did choose this example of text for effect. Um, these standards aren't going away, but this would be what was in the ordinance. Uh, all of those kinds of standards will be on the individual applications, which is actually our current process right now. Each application has the list of what needs to be in the application when it's submitted, but it's also in the ordinance. Um, so this kind of, uh, this kind of, uh, ordinance-based application makes it very unwieldy to make any changes, um, and sorry.
Because you can't change the form.
You can't change, right.
Yeah, and. Can't make a question easier.
And, and keeping it just saying, applications must include a completed application form. Whatever you put on the application form is what's required. Um, so for, if, example, if we have civic standards that need to be, um, we need specifics for civic standards in a form-based code application, we can just have that on the form that say, these are the things you need for a form-based code civic standards. That's not currently in this submission. So also, we are looking at um, taking some of the ordinance, uh, so again, the left is the current ordinance and the right is the proposed ordinance. Um, and the left, as you can see, is not very easy to read. It's a, it's literally a wall of text. Not literally, it is visually a wall of text. Um, and on the right, it is significantly easier to read. Um, so what we're looking at here, uh, we take a list of things, zoning map amendment for special use permit application, which is not a complete list, in fact, um, and then turn it into pre-application meeting is required for these things. Additionally, we are removing unnecessary jargon and just the overly wordiness. Um, each prospective applicant in parentheses, the applicant, we can just say the applicant. We don't need to specify. And then again, uh, updating current procedure. So in this particular example, um, we do request that all pre-application meetings, uh, submit information five days ahead of time. Um, currently, the ordinance says, you can, you can provide it if you want or not, um, before or during, whenever. This process update gives us more focus on what we're actually doing and allows staff to better prepare. And this is just kind of the smaller kind of updates that we're doing in this process. Um, there are a few changes that I want everyone to kind of like be aware of as we're moving forward. Um, again, as we mentioned, we are taking submission requirements out of the ordinance and putting it into the process. So, um, as, as shown on application forms will be kind of the watchword. And it will allow future updates to requirements, make it much faster and much easier to understand. Uh, one of the big things, um, that sounds big but is actually, um, less so, is we have been, uh, we have been recommended to change what we call a special exception um, because it is confusing from the Code of Virginia standpoint, where a special exception of the Code of Virginia is actually a special use permit. Um, and in other municipalities, they have a, uh, that same naming convention, um, or they do one or the other. Uh, we're the only ones, I think, that have both a special exception and a special use permit in our ordinance. Um, so we are proposing the name, just legislative modifications. That's essentially what it is. It's clearer. Um, and we're trying to look forward even further into the ordinance to reduce the number of special exceptions and just make standards, um, codified instead of requiring conditions on every single application. Um, right now, we have a very large number of special exceptions that go before the board. Um, and the conditions that are applied on each one are pretty standardized and they could very easily be codified. Um, additionally, on the modifications, uh, side of things, we are, um, calling out, uh, minor modifications that are not rising to the level of a legislative modification, and we're calling those administrative modifications. These are things like substituting shared parking for the number of parking spaces that the ordinance currently requires. Um, these are going to be called out in the ordinance as sections where there can be modifications made to the requirements. Um, we do want to avoid, um, trying to overstep the bounds of the zoning administrators' powers, um, definitely. And, uh, but we, we do want to call them out as a type of application so that this is a standardized form, format when you're requesting these applications as a developer or as any kind of applicant. Um, so then the people will know what the process is. The process is not at the last minute, ask for a special, ask for a, um, uh, administrative modification. It's going to be upfront as part of the application process. Um, and then finally, one other, the last change that I kind of want to bring to everyone's attention is um, a, a really more of a naming convention and calling out the process, which is a zoning map amendment with proffers. Um, we are calling that out in its own separate section, conditional zoning and proffers. Um, this is again a pretty statewide convention. Um, a zoning map amendment in most zoning ordinances is, uh, generally when the board rezones something by themselves and, and of themselves. Um, a request for a zoning app amendment with a proffer to avoid, um, offsets of impacts, that is called conditional zoning and proffers. Um, and so it is still a zoning map amendment. The application types probably won't change. Um, but it does bring in the separate processes for when the board initiates versus when an applicant initiates. Um, so looking to future work, uh, we do need to pull some staff resources for graphic design. We do fortunately have very talented staffers, um, in our zoning and planning divisions. Uh, they just need a few extra hours in the day to, to get these things, um, on their, on their calendars. Um, we are looking at additional questions for some of the, uh, recommendations that we had from our consultants to make sure that these things are going to meet legal requirements and won't be challenged, that we can be upheld as the shining exemplary ordinance that we are currently referred to. Um, there are some, some questions on wordings for those, uh, for those questions, and then uh, some things that we're trying to figure out if we can put on our wish list or if we need to, uh, back away from. And additionally, we do have, um, additional drafting and stakeholder work for specifically site plan ordinance and the entrance corridor standards, because these are very high-touch kind of applications. Um, and there is, uh, there's a lot of feedback that is coming in and, and needs to continue that dialogue. Um, so up next, um, we're looking at a work session on Article Three and Four, uh, which is the applications that we just discussed, and then non-conformities. Um, and we're, we're trying to bring that into you, um, Q4 of this calendar year 2023. Um, and I also want to get everyone kind of thinking about the next phase, um, which is something that I think is a little bit more, um, exciting. It's the kind of things that people have, uh, groups to talk about, dark skies ordinance people. Um, master gardeners have talked to us, uh, and this is the phase two. This is all of the community design standards, and that includes the screening, the lighting, the landscaping. Um, it also includes the more boring things like curb and gutter, but I don't think that people have a ton of input on that. Um, parking requirements, um, and I, we don't have these uh, engagement processes scheduled yet. Um, but these are going to be going up on the calendar, and we want to start reaching out to people and talking about that and thinking about the things that we want to be designed standards all across the entire development area of the county. So that did not take an hour. Um, we do have a couple of, uh, best practices just in general to keep in mind um, for countywide design standards. Um, we do want to keep things as, uh, kind of streamlined and broadly applicable as possible. This is something that we hear a lot of, is that when people are going through their application processes, they get kind of bogged down in requirements that aren't necessarily in the ordinance, and they end up with uh, conditions of approval that are the same as are in the ordinance or slightly more stringent. And so we really want those things to be in the design standards so that they are applicable to everybody. The applications can go through faster. We can get more interesting buildings. We can get more interesting projects. Um, and then, uh, have, have people want to build things here. Um, we do obviously have lots of time for questions. Um, Bert, did you want to? No, okay. Uh, yeah, so that's kind of. Yeah, so that's kind of. Where we are right now and um hopefully we have. Some great stuff coming ahead.
Great, great. Thank you for the update. Um I'll work starting at my far left with Commissioner Vivens. If there's any questions or comments, we're just gonna work our way around the horn. So, so Commissioner Vivens.
Thank you, Chair. And as usual. Thank you, Ms. Brownfield, for um. One of the most concise presentations that we receive and it's always a pleasure. So I've got just a couple of questions, really, and they're not even comments, just sort of questions. So. If I'm understanding the processes that were that are on your Article three. That are gonna be uh that are gonna be reviewed and 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 potentially um modified. Is really in alignment, is trying to align the county's process for the built environment. In a way that allows builders and developers to come in, appreciate what it is, what what we're trying to do here. And then move quickly, or I shouldn't say quickly, move efficiency efficiently through the process so that they can throw some dirt around.
Yeah, a lot of um a a lot of the goals of the entire zoning modernization project, so this section. Which is Article three and then the future ordinance phases. Um so Phase two, which will look at all the community design standards. All of those are to make things more predictable. And um get things that are coming in the way that we want them. Um so there's a a faster, smoother process for everybody.
And tha- that's what I was hoping that I heard and and so I did. And so you just confirmed that. So I have two more, two more. Items, please. So on the special exceptions, that whole section that you spoke about, that really aren't legislative issues for us. They are for the B O for the for the B O S, for the supervisors. So at some point, well, do you think there will be a discussion on on whether or not those even need to come to us? Because I I I, there's this point where we always go to and it's usually, it's usually Commissioner Farhawk that says. And everyone knows, we're not gonna vote on these. And so my point is, well, you know, well, would it speed the process? If we didn't know about it, because we're not gonna deal with it. And so I'm while I'm, I'm not sort of saying that it's not an interesting process, but it would seem. When we're talking about process simplification, that might be one of the things that you bring, that things come to us, which we can actually. Have some lift to and and weigh in. So that was just something I just offer. To you for consideration and for discussion among us when we get to that point.
Um so to clarify, are you talking about what we currently call special exceptions?
That we never vote on.
Come to us, but that we don't actually have authority over. And then we add, well, we always, well, I feel like, okay, well, should we, and I just, I'm always like, I'm a by-the-book person, so I'm just like. We don't have any say, so let's not.
Um yeah, I think um I think that would be something that we probably should talk to the planning director about. Because that's not currently in the ordinance as required and it's not in the proposed ordinance as required.
Okay, okay.
But it still keeps, these things keep coming to our planning commission. And we're saying, well, two of us are saying potentially that we don't need to see them because. I can't think of a single one where we've said, oh, no, that shall not be.
Yeah, there's a little.
No authority.
There's a little bit of a backstory there in that the the former um county zoning ordinance did have those routed to the planning commission. But as you all may know, there was this Sinclair decision by the Virginia Supreme Court that specified that those sorts of legislative decisions should not be. Uh delegated or could not be delegated to the planning commission. Um there was recently a zoning text amendment about a year or two ago. That that moved those out so that that's no longer in the ordinance. So the current county ordinance doesn't call for those to go through the the planning commission either. But the planning commission is always welcome to um to to volunteer its recommendations if it so chooses.
Well, I think we just did that recently.
We just volunteered. Yeah, we just volunteered. We volunteered ourselves back off of that one. And so the the only other thing I have to ask about, when we get to Phase two. On the items that you had on Phase two, we have, I think this is sort of somewhat of it. Um are we gonna, cause I think we had. Um uh, well, you can probably go to the faster than I can remember. I I think you had traffic and parking and entry, oh, there you are. So you had entrance corridors, parking, landscaping, signs, light. So all the things about how do we get around places? You know, how do I get from place A to B? And so what we also be talking about there, while many of us may not be. Passionate about gutters, many of us are passionate about sidewalks. And multiple and multimodal um conditions that allow people to move across. Particularly the uh the the heavily built environment. And so if we're gonna be talking about lighting, signs, parking and entrance corridors. I would hope that there would be some consideration that we talk about in either broader specific terms. How we move non-vehicular traffic. Our activities through that. So how do we do that? So that's all I had to ask, Madam.
Yeah, I think um that's a really, really important thing to talk about. And I think that one of the things that we struggle with and the reason that it's on that list right now is that currently the county cannot own its own roads. And so we can't uh and and any, most sidewalks are in the right of way. So the sidewalks are what V dot requires. So that's definitely something that should be part of the conversation, I think. Um. But I don't know what, I don't know what that answer is.
And and I don't have the answer either. I I think that so some of the, I would imagine, at least listening to some of my colleagues. Part of what might be in in the comp plan, and I don't know how this will link over to the ordinance, is aspirational pieces. And so there is a way, I believe, with the language, which you're good creative crafting there, wordsmithing there, to talk about. The sort of overall sort of expectation or hope that that the county has. When people bring new projects or redevelopment projects, projects to to our attention. I'm thinking, for instance, as we heard earlier this evening, if the if the built commercial environment were to, in fact. Become more residential. How would we do that in a way that that in our community, which is still basically a suburban community in some aspects of it? How would we do those those conversions in a way that would facilitate sort of those dual uses? Which would mean that you'd have dual uses both on the property and how people might get back and forth to those properties. And so that's really where my mind is sort of spinning to. Is that okay?
Thank you. Yeah.
If I could tag on to that, I'm not trying to go out of order, but like we can go, we can exceed V dot standards, can't we? So I mean, we, I I understand, like you maybe saying, we can only require what V dot requires, but to his aspirational point. You know, like we could say, like, we would like to see, like, for example, wider medians between traffic and the sidewalk. Like, I'm thinking about Route twenty-nine, whereas a silly one-foot wide strip that doesn't give much comfort when cars are going by at sixty miles an hour.
Um yeah, so I uh take this with a grain of salt because I am not a V dot representative. But I believe the issue that we're coming across and went through this with form-based code for the first go-round. Was that um anything that exceeds their standards, someone else has to maintain. They will not maintain sidewalks that are wider than five feet.
Or.
Or I think it's like eight feet.
Or wider planting strips, okay.
Yeah, so I don't know. I don't know what that is. There there's gotta be ways around it. I just don't know what that is.
So if the place, if the planning strip is is this big, they'll only do this, my. That's why we have that zon- that's why we have that zombie strip over there on twenty-nine and hydraulic. Because it's this wide as opposed to this wide.
I I think if I could, I think I'm right on this, cause we've done this with signage where we've asked for above standard signage. And we have a maintenance agreement with V dot that requires us to. Maintain the signs and the same with any other above standard. Like wider medians, things like that. I think there's a way to enter into an agreement. I think the trick is that you. You have to be careful with what you would require as a planning commission, because then you're imposing something that's above standard on an applicant. That may or may not be. You know, affordable, for example.
I'm thinking more like. Your employer, your employer, my employer can pay for.
Yeah.
Into those.
That's right.
Yes, we have exceeded V dot standards in in, you know, number of areas, but it's on us, but UVA can certainly do that. Yeah, I would definitely echo that. Gotta be careful what we impose on others that can't necessarily.
That's right.
Resource. So I I just like to thank you for uh very concise and clear. Uh presentation. I don't actually have any questions. I have a comment. If you, if you can go to your best practices slide. Thank you. So this is part of your next steps, assuming, right, that you're gonna look into the best practice into these areas. And so this is a comment I made probably several years ago in terms of when we first started a conversation about design standards. Um form-based codes and others that we were talking about a few years ago. And what I would caution is is not getting too prescriptive. And when I see the term predictive development patterns. I'm a little concerned about that and what exactly does that mean and how does that unfold? So. Um you know, you said that we wanna encourage people to build and build, you know, exciting buildings where people like to work and live in. And so we just wanna make sure that they're not getting too prescriptive in how we apply our design standards. So certainly, obviously, look at best practice and I'm sure there's gonna be some that are very prescriptive, some that maybe are less so. Uh but anyway, that's I, but again, thank you very much for for the presentation. Commissioner Farhop.
Yeah, could you go back to that list? It was a few slides ago, like the five things, yeah. So yes, my question is really a process question, not to dig into all those things. Um I'm just curious. As is the process that um our consultant is gonna. Create something that's then gonna go to some kind of stakeholder roundtable and then it's gonna. Come to the planning commission as this is the proposal. What do you think?
Um so let me, so we have, we we do have that. Um we have an engagement.
Let me give you a little more background on what, where my head's at. So uh in speaking. In speaking to our prior staffer, Mr. Rapp. Um we had long conversations uh about landscaping standards. And that's like something I do in my day job is read people's ordinances and fix their standards. And um and the fact that we don't have any standards in Amara County for tree planting, like just what are the specs? We have shopping malls here where the trees are dying because they're planted improperly, but because we have no standards, there's nothing to hold them to. So like, for example, like I knew he knew that I was concerned about that and that he assured me that when they got to that in the zoning code. He was gonna make sure to to address that, but he's left. So like, I don't know what the process is for the commission to. Ahead of time, tell you, there's some things we'd like you to look at as part of these topics. Before you go to the roundtable, so that they're included in that public part process. And then we don't, that doesn't come to us and we're like, hey, but what about this? And what about, you know, I'd like that to. So what's that process, I guess, is how do we suggest things that we'd like to be included?
Um so yeah, that's that's kind of what I was hoping for with this slide with next steps is starting that conversation. Um and if there's specific things um that you would like to request that we look into. And I know that we had some contacts that were recommended for some of these processes. Um I I think at this point, um we are just specifically asking you to email them to us.
Okay.
Um and they will become part of that process. Um I mean. Definitely copy Kevin and Jody and Bart and forward that on. And uh that'll go into the folders and start looking at that when we are working on Phase two.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I get this list down or can, uh is it, do we have this presentation?
Um we can, we can send it out. Um and also I can attach the um engagement plan again.
That'd be great.
I think that'll be helpful as well.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks. That answers that. That's all I had.
Commissioner Mistle.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Leah. Very, very helpful. Um great presentation. I have just a couple of minor things. One. When you shared the examples of the simplified language. What I found to be really helpful, I'm sure you're gonna do this, is embedded links in that simplified language. Cause you're gonna lose some of the wording that some other people may wanna see, but also you're losing wording some people don't care about. But if there's a way to just click a link on that, it's really, it's really helpful if you wanna get that next layer down. Um second thing is, I'm glad you mentioned, uh maybe it was on the previous slide, the Rockstar graphics people. That we have at the county, because I think anytime, like there was an example where you were talking about um. What was a timeline related note in one of the, on one of the slides? Seeing the timelines, the way they're sort of just drawn out in a simple way. This is one example of something that we received, but um those are immensely helpful, uh I find anyway. Uh and they're also a good way to keep people accountable to the process, which sometimes you lose track of. And then this is just something I'm sure I'm missing, but you mentioned on this slide, draft of Articles three and ten. I I thought you said Articles three and four. But it's three and, is it three and ten?
It's three and ten. If I said three and four, that was, that was misspeaking.
Totally cool. And then if you look at the Berkeley Group presentation that we got back in December of last year. Talks about Article nine, non-conforming uses lots and structures.
Yeah, we um we had to adjust things because they added an additional section. Um yeah.
So that's now Article ten.
Yes.
Thank you. That was it.
Commissioner Murray.
Yes, um so first, um I'd like to a little bit, know a little bit more about the administrative modifications. Um I assume there's gonna be a, an enumerated list of what things qualify for administrative modifications and what things don't. Um and then I hope there's an opportunity for the public to know what things were changed administratively, so that's transparent to the public. Because if we're taking that out of. You know, out of that process and we're putting it to an administrative process, then that suddenly becomes invisible to the public. So I think that's a very important thing. Um and I think, you know, speaking of that, on page eleven, it talks about faster approvals. And and as we mentioned in a previous meeting, faster is not always better if it's a bad application. So if if.
I'm sorry, continue.
No, so I mean, if if um. We, there are things you wanna expedite because they're good projects and because they go above and beyond the requirements the county has set forth. And there are things that barely meet standards or or don't meet standards at all, and we certainly don't wanna expedite those. So I think um, so I think when we're talking about expediting, I I had a conversation, you know, years ago. I don't know if it's still a thing. But a a comment that I heard in the past was that. Um applications would come through incomplete and then staff would kick them back to the applicant. They would make a couple more changes, kick them back to the applicant, I mean, to staff. And there's this like. Ping pong going back and forth until finally the applicant had reached the bare minimum requirements to get it through and then that went through. And I think that's expensive for the applicant and that would be, if that's still true, is expensive for the applicant and expensive for the county. Um I prefer to see um the requirement setup upfront. In ideal world, you know, we talked about perhaps jokingly so, putting a letter grade on applications. Um I still like that idea. I'm making that letter grade public. Um so that people have a built-in incentive from the very get-go to get their applications right the first time. And I think there should be some minimum bar if you submit an application below a certain standard, like it's just flat out rejected. We're not gonna keep. Doing it over and over again. So so that's a thought on that. Um also, um when you, in in Phase two, that whole cluster where you have lighting, signs, landscaping, parking. Um it seems like a natural conversation to go along with those. We've talked a lot about low-impact development standards. And and those are very, that's a very related conversation about, you know, right now, um are, the way we're doing. Parking lots and the way we're doing landscaping doesn't necessarily do anything for stormwater and can make it considerably worse. Maybe we should have some conversations at the same time about how to make those standards better to for stormwater. And see. Yeah, that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moore.
Uh thanks again, yeah, for the presentation. Now, just echoing what others said about how it was concise and clear and uh got to the points. I also very much appreciate the um, the the graphic and visual simplification and the use of white space and better font bullet lists and all the rest. Just tightening it up makes it more understandable for, you know, educated lay audience. Um so well done there. And then, yeah, also appreciate uh moving toward best practices, including faster processing, if not approvals. Um and uh countywide design standards. I had a question about countywide design standards as well, and I know there'll be a lot more as we look ahead to Phase two. On what that means and what that looks like, but I'm thinking about how so often things are are very bifurcated in what we do in the rural areas, what we do in the growth areas. And so like, if we have a countywide, is that addressed in the countywide design standards, just in terms of lighting and signage that. People might be fine with on Rio or twenty-nine, but not so much in a place like Batesville or Stony Point. Um and if we, how how that's addressed or will be.
Sure, um so that I can answer pretty quickly. Um the. Um, the uh, the current design standards are for commercial developments. So most of those, especially the lighting standards, um, they are, uh, the these only apply to commercial and industrial developments. Um, for noncommercial, for residential and rural, they have separate, which is basically no spillover. Um, uh, and the um, the design standards for things like parking. You're uh, not gonna get much parking in the grill area. Um, and signs are are the same across the, across the way. Um, a lot of our standards are kind of contained in our entrance corridor requirements. Um, that's where the more stringent standards are and entrance corridors are kind of by definition, commercial, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Also, I'm learning so many things about how we don't own our own sidewalks for the most part. All right, go ahead, you have one more?
This might be one for your boss. This is more of a specific example, and I apologize, but I can't help myself. That that, how about a, what what do we do in a situation where there's like a, a rural store? And I'm thinking of some actual stores where they, some of them are sold, they may predate the zoning ordinance or whatever, but a long, like they've been there a long time. And then they suddenly decide they're going to put up all new lighting. And it doesn't comport with our lighting standards. And the county doesn't notice. So I guess that's my question, like what is the procedure there? Somebody like tells the owner that they are not in compliance or we reported to the county or the county goes out and says, hey, by the way. Because they're not coming through the zoning process, but there's a lot of people just putting up lighting or deciding to light their second story. And and these are at commercial enter enterprises, so what is the process there?
Um, so if no one notices, I mean, you can get away with a lot of things, I don't.
I notice a lot of things, but I'm just debating which things to, to 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 bring to your attention. Because sometimes I bring things in like this terrible billboard and the, and they say that predates the zoning ordinance. And so they can light up the sky all they want. Um, that's not exactly how staff said it to me, but that was the basic gist I got. So I, you know, there, but there are other places, there's a lot of just, people are putting up new lighting that is not comport on commercial establishments.
Yeah, so the um, the uh, distinction kind of here is between newer things versus nonconforming or or, I'm sorry, uh, versus things that are nonconforming and may have vested rights. Um, if they are already there, that is correct, we can't really change things. There are some ugly things in the county that have been there since 1960. And that's just that, and until it falls down, it's gonna be there. But uh, we do have uh, specific standards for country stores, um, which I think is what you're talking about there. Um, as far as lighting, I believe it just has to meet the standard lighting regulations as well.
But like, would it have to meet the, because I'm talking about people who may have even been somewhat in compliance, but have put up a whole lot more lighting. Two story tall lighting flooding everywhere kind of stuff. I'm just trying to multiples of these, not just one light. So I'm just trying to understand, like.
Would you like to report a zoning violation?
Perhaps, um, but I would like, I just trying to understand like how you guys handle that. And I don't want to derail our meeting going off on a tangent, but I'm, it is something that's happening.
Yeah, I can give you. Parts of both a zoning administrator, I can give you kind of the short course, which is, we would investigate each one kind of case by case. And if there are things, because there are certain maintenance things you can do with existing lighting fixtures to match fixture for fixture. There's other things when you do um, wholesale changes that would have to comply. So we'd have to look at each situation. Um, we do not have a proactive enforcement program, as you know. Um, but if we receive that complaint, then we investigate. And if you ended up putting up the wrong stuff, you gotta put up the right stuff. Um, and that's how it works. So uh, we hope that folks contact us, a lot of the newer country stores have been in communications with us. They they're investing a lot of money and resources in these uses. And they want to make sure that they're doing things that are compliant with the ordinance. Um, because it's really hard if you don't do it right the first time to find time to do it again. And so um, we're kind of in tune to that, but if we see anything or hear anything, receive a complaint essentially, then we take a look at it case by case.
Yeah, I mean, it just comes up because people are asking me, you know, like, well, we're gonna, if we're gonna do the lighting ordinance, because this is out there in the public. People are calling me, coming to my office to visit me in the morning, you know, and I guess, you know, like, they're asking, but what about those guys? You know, and and it's not always a case where it was just predated the ordinance. It's like somebody has stuck something new on their building, or maybe they put up a new sign, they didn't get any permission. And so as we tighten things down, it's not unexpected that we would get more people raising their hands and asking about things that are happening now.
Yeah, the idea is to communicate any of the new stuff, but we do over 400 complaints a year.
Okay.
Right, with four inspectors, uh, for code compliance officers. And it's everything from cars to lighting, we've had folks replace wall packs specifically.
You say over 400?
We have 400, yeah, over 400 complaints a year.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's a non proactive stance.
Right.
Yeah.
Interesting. Commissioner, I know you had another comment.
Yeah, thanks, uh, thanks, Jared, just one, um, if I could. Um, put a respectful tweak on Commissioner Murray's comment about grading applications. Um, I would, I would say that, you know, many applicants that there's, and this skips back to Commissioner Karazan's comment too, about unequal resources. That not all applicants have the resources to be able to bring a grade A or B application, but they may be fighting to get a. Project done and they're pulling whatever they can together and they create a passing grade. So um, I think it also puts the county in a position of having to make a judgment or value call, which I would say is probably not. Your jobs or nor would I would say who they want that. Um, it's more about are the regulations being followed, yes or no? So I would say probably more of a pass fail than a A, B, C. And definitely would stay away from streaming, streamlining reviews of uh, applications that get a higher grade, just for the record.
Thanks, can I just add something to that? Because I, and I, and I absolutely agree um, that we need to be mindful of not everybody having the same level of resource. However, I think one of the best applications that we had was a uh, small residential application. They did hire somebody, but it was, it was very simple, very straightforward, but it had everything we needed. So, and and so, I mean, we actually complimented them because here's someone that doesn't have a lot of resources for this, not a developer. They're not making money up off of what what they were doing. It was not a commercial venture in any way. But it was a very thoughtful application, it had everything that we needed. So I think that's the key is it makes, making sure that, that what we need to see, based on the type of application that it is, is in there. And to me, that's the key and and obviously it's not making overly arduous, but uh, I I just thought that was really impressive. But the hand sketched one. I I think there was some heads, hand sketches, but it was, it had everything we needed. I mean, we, we, I don't think we had practically any questions.
Yeah.
And then we get some developers, they're probably spending tens of thousands of dollars or even hundreds of thousands of dollars in some cases.
Absolutely.
And we don't get what we need.
Yeah.
It's not always about money.
Right, right, good point.
Yeah. Um, I did have one question, it it may not be worth much of anything, but you say the city of Charlottesville is undertaking the same process right now? But are you using the same consultant?
No, um. Uh, I'm not sure on their, on their uh, who their consultants are. Um, but we're, we're kind of uh, all kind of learning together. Uh, we were actually just talking about this whole process at um, APA Virginia last weekend. And a lot of people are doing this and different people are all just trying to go through the process together and figure out, oh, that really worked for you guys, maybe we should try that, so.
You just answered my, my follow up question was, are there moments or content areas where it makes sense? To collaborate or to coordinate, even though I'm sure there are two different project schedules and things like that. But are there areas that it makes sense to do that where?
Yeah, and I think that um, we have also been talking with Roanoke County. Um, we actually have a meeting set up with them next week about their form based code. Um, and uh, just like learning, talking to people, uh, the very nice gentleman at Hen, at Henrico as well. Um, and just kind of sharing information and not necessarily coordinating our, our ordinances, because we do have different populations. We have different needs. We have UVA, they don't, we have very different things uh, that we're working with. But we are all kind of trying to work with the Code of Virginia and um, the ordinances that we have had. And trying to make them into something that resonates with today's population and today's developers and uh, the needs of the populations.
Uh, well said, and understanding that we certainly are different. I'd hate to, I bring this up as a, from a owner's perspective, for example, I would hate for it to be more arduous. In one place and the other, when you're literally one mile away, right? So I don't want to miss out on opportunities when we're looking for more housing, more whatever, you can fill in the blank because of something like that. So that's why I bring that up. Um, any other questions or comments from the commission, Commissioner Murray?
I I do have one thing. Um, there has been some discussion about allowing of residential development and commercial zoning. Um, I would just like to make my own comment that I think affordable commercial and office space is just as important as, is affordable housing. And in some ways more important because it's revenue positive as opposed to revenue negative. You know, as we saw in the housing market collapse, um, it it actually benefited affordable housing in our area. Because after the housing market tanked, a lot of people could then afford housing. And a lot of houses had to sit empty for a while before that housing could be afforded, affordable. Um, however, that said, we have a lot of areas in the county um, with, that are underutilized with excessively large empty parking lots. And I I do think um, that as we discuss parking in this phase two, a a great conversation we had would be allowing housing to be put there by right. In that excessive underused parking.
Um, I do think so, parking, yes, I do want to just clarify districts are going to be in a further phase beyond phase two. I think it's actually phase three. Um, districts and the uses that will be in them, I think that's going to be really where we take the information that keeps coming out of this comp plan process. And really put that into the ordinance, because the the districts and their uses are really what shapes the individual areas. So that is, I mean, we're basically trying to do that with form based code. Um, we just really want people to build apartment buildings in those parking lots.
Understood, I just thought it should be, might wouldn't be addressed now.
Here, can I come back on, so so I want to be, I want to be real clear here. The model of having sort of mixed use structures is as old as Switzerland. Where I had my cows downstairs and then I lived upstairs. And then right next door, I had the place I made some cheese. Um, and so we've come to this place where we specialize, we we've come, we're, we are a country that loves to specialize in things. To which I think is fine, you know, I I think there's some value to that. But I also believe we're also seeing that the specialization puts up unfortunate barriers to things. And so part of what I'm, what I'm hoping is that we're in a period now that we can rethink. How we do zoning that mitigates barriers. And to come to your, your, your conversation about, about the affordability of that. If we can also, at the same time, and this is not the county's business, but if we can also as a culture come for the fact that what does it mean to be housed? And that, and that that may in fact evolve, as I think we're seeing in our community, the migration to more. Um, apartments type living and away from what I would consider as more single family detached living. So what does that mean as far as providing, providing um, interesting and healthy and safe places to live? But does not necessarily follow the, the June Cleaver model. That that some of us may have, may have in our head. I say that just as, just out of a personal, so I saw something, I had to go and look at the street that I grew up on. Today, uh, on Google Maps. And I realized our house was probably the biggest, and this is not me bragging, but our house was the biggest house on the block. But you didn't realize that as a little kid. Now I look at it and say, why did we need a house that big? One of the reasons we need a house that big, because we had bought into the American way. And so I want to say that as we think about the real allocation of resources, maybe the zone helps us rethink. How do we have, how do we present zoning and comp plans to be able to encourage that diversity of, the diversity of ideas and the diversity of culture? That's all. And it wasn't necessarily sort of saying, well, we should just sort of automatically mesh together commercial property. But thinking about how do we use that in a way to facilitate housing and transportation and those things, which I think our society is looking, looking towards.
Right, I said, I'll take one more and then I'm gonna move us along in the agenda, uh, Commissioner Firehawk.
Okay, I was gonna make one comment, but now I have two. So and I'll blame uh, these other gentlemen, yeah. Um, so I I just say that if we want to be thinking about adaptive, we don't have time to get into this tonight. But if we want to be thinking about buildings that are more adaptive, we have to change some of our standards potentially. I'm not looking at our standards at the moment, but for example, city of West Palm Beach, they wanted to have buildings that could be converted. So like now be, everyone wanted to put up hotels, but like, but maybe in the future, we'll need so many hotels because they'll have too many. And maybe there should be apartment buildings. In order to make that work, they had to change the standards for the height of hotel rooms to be taller. Because hotel rooms have lower ceilings, so you could never adapt those hotels into residences if they kept their old standards. So they changed it. They also changed their parking garages, they changed the design of them so that when you built them, they could be converted into build into uh, residential or commercial structures. I even purchased with UVA 20 years ago and they said, well, we could do that, but we're not going to. Um, you know, because I was trying to think of the future when we're all like levitating to class in our little backpack or whatever. The the more serious comment though, um, so just to keep that in mind, if we want to be thinking about converting of structures and adaptive reuse. Um, was I really want to just uh, plus one, the con, the concept of making people bring to the um, planning commission. Things that have been already in the application five days ahead. In in other localities that I work for, I have to submit all my materials usually like 10 days ahead. And but it's very common in this commission, I don't see it other places so much. We get like a brand new slideshow with brand new renderings that no one has seen, that's being presented by the applicant, but is not in the packet. It's not in any attachments and they're like, well, we just came up with this today, or here's a new sketch. Or in the back of their PowerPoint, they say, oh, I'm glad you asked that. And then they start showing us all these other drawings. And it's really hard, sometimes I see things that I think I don't have time to digest. This entirely new building design and whether it's conceptual or it's really proffered or whether it's really what they're gonna do, I can't even tell. So I would like to to push that everything they're gonna show us has to be ahead of time in the packet or or. Or they should delay until they have time to do these other things. Because we're, we're just put in a very uncomfortable position. I can't go and compare that. I I'm supposed to make a snap decision up here based on something that just flashed by me for 10 seconds.
Mr. Brownfield, you get what you needed or do you wanna?
Yeah, I think we've got some great stuff and um, I think that we're gonna be looking for everybody's suggestions with future phases. Um, and uh, hopefully the language that we bring um, at the end of next quarter um, is gonna be something that we can go ahead and and recommend.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
The next presentation we have is CPA 2021 00002 AC 44 updates, uh, Mr. McDermott.
Thank you, Kevin McDermott, I'm the acting planning director. Uh, Ms. Brumfield did a great job of being brief and I hope to match that as well. Um, this is gonna be just a slightly expanded version of my, my typical uh, AC 44 update. And uh, sort of in, in preparation for our next meeting, our next PC meeting, where we'll be given a, a, a pretty in-depth review. So today I'm just gonna quickly go over uh, what we're gonna talk about at the August 8th work session on the planning toolkits. That'll be uh, we'll be looking for input on the topic areas that we have been evaluating and been talking about to the public for a while now. Those include activity centers in the development area, criteria for future development area expansion, rural crossroad communities and rural interstate interchanges. And I'll get into a little bit more description in that, on that uh, work session in a minute. And then also quickly go over the fall engagement and PC work sessions, uh, including the timeline uh, on the draft goals and objectives. And uh, how we're gonna go about doing PC work sessions for those. So uh, this uh, graphic was in your packet and um, this was sort of uh, after our last meeting, we were trying to. Uh, give a better, a better picture to the planning commission as to where we are in this. Uh, give a better, a better picture to the planning commission as to where we are in this process. And so uh we put this um sort of guide together to to help clarify that. Um, it looks like you can see my cursor, so I'll just quickly show you what we're looking at here. So the top line is the overall AC forty four uh process. We've got uh four phases for this, including phase one, which was planned for growth. You can see some of the things we covered in that. Phase two, the goals, objectives and planning toolkits. This is the phase we are in now. Uh, starting uh early in twenty twenty four, we will be getting into uh prioritizing the action steps. That's really. Uh, the sort of strategies that we are going to be recommending in the comp plan. And then finally, phase four, uh late next year, we'll be finalizing and adopting the plan. So is going from uh that second phase, a little more detail there you can see is broken down in this next timeline right here. Uh, it was sort of broken up into three different steps. Step one is uh what we termed discovering challenges and opportunities. This is when we are really looking at all those different topic areas. Uh, that we are covering in the comprehensive plan, including land use, transportation, parks and recreation, natural resources, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and you can see what we are doing with there. There was a an engagement plan uh that we presented to the board at that time. And we had some uh some community engagement going on, including going out to the community, some online activity. Uh, and then that brought us up to uh step two. Oh, we had a a a PC meeting on that as well. Uh, that brought us up into the um. The developing planning toolkits and you can see right here, this is where we are. We're finishing up this phase right here. Um, we will be uh coming to you, as I said, on August eighth with those planning toolkits. Uh, following that, we'll go on to the board of supervisors with the tool, planning toolkits. And then that'll close off step two, and then we'll begin step three, which is defining the goals and objectives. And you can see the timeline down here and I'm going to get into that in more detail in just a second. So the August eighth work session on planning toolkits, uh, what we're looking for here is for planning commission input and direction. On how to update those uh recommendations for the top, the topic areas. As I said, that's activity centers, uh future development area expansion, crossroad communities and rural interstate interchanges. The format we're going to have, and this is going to be held over in room two forty one. Uh, and it's going to be the only item on the agenda that day, so we can take as much time as we need. Uh, our our thought is that it would be about a ten minute presentation on the topic where we'd uh go over what we presented and what we heard. When we went out to the public and then that'll be followed by about twenty minutes or so of PC discussion. We're going to have that professionally facilitated by Cozart Consulting, who is one of our um, one of our consultants on that. Uh, comprehensive plan team that we have. Uh, she does a really great job of this and we just thought that would be better so that we can help manage time. And make sure that we're getting the input that we that we want to hear from you all and you have that opportunity to do that. Uh, so each with each one of those topics, we're going to have two to three options for how we could update that that element. Um, and then we'll ask you all for feedback, including uh which of those options you think we should pursue. Uh, and then once we get all that information, we will take that, take your input and feedback to the board. And I believe that's approximately a month later in the September, at one of the September meetings that we're going to go to the board. So uh, that's what we're looking at for the August eighth work session. Uh, and then moving on to um step three, I just wanted to give a a preview of what we're going to be doing for that fall. Engagement timeline and how we're going to be uh working with you all on that. So you can see what we've done here. Uh, in initially, we had proposed having one work session. That would cover the goals and objectives for all of the topic areas in the in the cop plan. We realized that was going to be way too much information to present at one time. So what we've done is we've broken this up into three different uh. Work sessions with the planning commission, each one focusing on about two or two chapters of the uh. Of the the cop plan. So you can see here, um, what we're planning is that this, this is the end right here of step uh two, as you can see. Uh, we will go out and we will do some community engagement on those goals and objectives for natural resources, historic resources and parks and recreation. Then we will come to you all, present what we heard, present what we've, we've gathered, the information. Uh, I I'd like to point out that we have been working on goals and objectives for a while now, going out and talking to subject matter experts. In the different uh departments of the county, in committees with the county, um, things like that. Uh, you've probably seen it in the. Natural heritage committee. I know we've been to them, the um, uh, a few historic preservation committee as well, that kind of thing. So. We will then come to you all, present what we heard and uh get feedback from you as to what you think about how those goals and objectives be done. We finish that one, then we move on and do our public engagement or our community engagement on housing and economic development. We come back to you and we once again present what we heard and get your feedback. Do the same thing with land use, transportation, community facilities. Um, and then after we do all of those, all of those topic areas, that's when we'll go to the board with all the recommendations for goals and objectives. Um, so it's a, it's still within the uh timeline that we presented to the board. But it does allow us to uh not overwhelm, you know, the PC with the, a lot of information at once, kind of breaks that up and it helps staff. Kind of organize that a little bit better. So uh, just a a quick um. Quick piece on the next steps on this, uh, we'll be continuing to draft those comp plan goals and objectives. Um, and uh, look, and you can see the list of the different groups that we have been uh coordinating with. So I was mentioning things like. The natural heritage committee. Um, and we've had meetings with everyone on this. And oftentimes multiple meetings with everyone on this list you can see here. So that's the work that we've been doing on the comp plan goals and objectives. We continue to do that over the next few months. Um, then the planning toolkits, as I said, that's the August eighth works. Work session and uh finally the the fall engagement on the goals and objectives through September and December. Uh, or September through December. Uh, there will be in-person and online opportunities to provide input on those things. Um, we are looking at a a variety of methods to do outreach, um, including uh AC forty four office hours. Online polls, things like that. So uh, and also going out into the com- community for pop-ups, things like that. Um, so uh, I think that covers, oh, and then following that, we'll be getting into uh uh up. Updated land use designations. These are things that I think we've mentioned before to you all. Updated land use designations is is recognizing that right now, all our master plans have different land use types. And we're trying to standardize that across those plans. Um, also the neighborhood model principles, which is in the current comp plan, how we might be able to adjust that to make it more usable for. Staff and applicants, developers and you all. Um, and then look at things like doubt density calculations for the land use, how those are done. Um, so that's really my update, but I'm happy to take questions. Uh, um, recognizing that uh we will have a a really good meeting, a thorough meeting on this on October eighth. So. With that, I'll take anything you want to say.
Yeah, uh, thank you for this. This is very helpful and the graphics are, I felt like very um. Clear and concise to to show where we are now. One thing I might add is as we are, you know, advancing through this process. We're starting to look at how the schedule allows us to bring in county SMEs to uh present on certain topics to help inform. Deeper and richer conversation on those topical areas as we get there in Q three, Q four. So. Uh, I'll start tomorrow right this time with Commissioner Moore, if you have any questions or comments uh based on the presentation you've seen.
Uh, I like the presentation very much. I'm I'm looking forward to the the multiple sessions that kind of break out the uh the topics and um I think that'll be a a smart way to. Have a robust discussion several times running. Um, I did have some questions looking at the engagement uh tools that we might be using. Um, the the community engagement work, the the questionnaires, um. The in-person chats, uh, it 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 um. I'm struck in the numbers uh that the engagement has has led to the same sorts of people who are always vocal, being vocal again. Um, you know, fewer than one in ten respondents rent their homes, uh, fewer than one in twenty live in an apartment. Um, and and I realize that the decisions like these government bodies like these, the the decisions are most informed by people who show up. Um, but I'm also wondering what we're doing to to make sure we can best reach people who don't usually show up.
Um, yeah, you know. I think that our best opportunity for that is having a diversity of opportunities. So as I said, um, we do some online things. We do some structured meetings and the last round we did open houses and we try and locate those in different places all around the county. Uh, and then also the things like, I think. One important one are these pop-ups. Uh, I don't know if you've ever been to a pop-up, but what we try and do. Is we go to a place where there are people that we don't typically talk to, people that don't typically engage. And we set up a table, we set up a a van or something and we're there available to answer questions. To present ideas and 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 try and get people more engaged. Uh, that that was one of our efforts to do different outreach. Um, one thing that's that we are working on that that maybe I can. Try and find a a copy of, I'm not sure if it's on our uh, on our plan is to show all the places that we're going for these um. For these engagement opportunities. So that would include like where we go to pop-ups, where we go to specific meetings of groups, which we have done that as well. And then also uh where we're holding our 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 structured meetings, like the ones we held. In step two, where we went to the open houses at different schools all around the county. Uh, purposely trying to not do them right here in this building. Uh, and and get to places, we 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 actually looked for places in rural, in the rural areas because we were like, that's a place where it's. A little more difficult to get feedback from from the community. So uh, you know, it's a, it's a struggle every time to try and get to the people that you. Don't typically hear from, uh, uh, but we're, we're making any effort. I'm happy to, you know, take any suggestions if you have thoughts about better ways that we can do it. We're happy to. See if there's something we might want to incorporate.
Yeah, the the I. We could, we could sit and chat about that for different, different brainstorm ideas. Um, and I do recall going to one of the um engagement sessions at Journey Middle School and saw you there. Um, and uh, and that was also one that was, uh, I I think there were more, more uh residents than, or rather more staff than residents maybe that day. Uh, sometimes it's hard to get the word out. I recognize that and and uh whatever budget we can throw behind it or different kind of. Uh, person-to-person kind of engagement can really help get people out uh using, you know, social networks that are there.
Um, and you know what? I I actually did forget to mention one other thing that I think is a really creative idea that we've had is. Using the working group. Uh, we have a working group set up and it's been a different group for the different phases. But um, these are people that we bring in and you can see that we have a a working group meeting that would be scheduled sometime in September. So the working group are citizens that were interested in this and what we do is we equip them. With information that they can then go out and share with their networks. Uh, and it's a pretty large group. I think we ended up with about thirty people in the. Phase two work group. And so we tell them, here's what we're sharing. Why don't you take this information to your communities? And send them out and they're going out to people that we often don't reach. Uh, and we've had a lot of success with getting some feedback from people from there. And I thought that was a. Another one that I forgot to mention, but I think it's working out really well for us.
Thanks, Kevin.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes. So you seen, looking through here first, I I agree. I'd love the way this laid out. Very clear, um, very helpful. Um. Where you have um. You have the setup where we're reviewing the planning toolkits and then af- after that it goes to the board of supervisors. I would strongly encourage, I I'd love to see that the toolkits that the board of supervisors receive don't look identical to the ones that we received, that actually our input. Is revised into that new toolkit. Um, and likewise, the toolkit that we're receiving, I I would certainly hope doesn't look.
Sorry. Yeah, I totally agree.
Yeah, that that also I I have the toolkit that we that we received when we we meet on this. Doesn't look anything like the toolkit that was originally released to the public, that all that input from the public. Has informed that and changed it in the interim, so that now we're receiving a different product than what was delivered originally delivered out. So.
Thanks. I I will say that our intent is uh to go to the board with recommendations that we get from the PC. So what you say. But like, we're, we're going to have these options, as I said, for the different items. And uh. Uh, two to three options for how we can update the comp plan and we're going to ask you, how do you think we should do it? And then that is what we're going to present to the board. We're going to say, we showed them these options. This is what the planning commission wanted and we can give background on that, why they thought this. Uh, if there's other edits, obviously we'll include that, but uh, we'll do our best to to accommodate that.
Anything else, Commissioner Murray?
Not at this time.
Commissioner, this one.
Great, thank you, Chair. Uh, just a couple, one quick question for you. What are you anticipating sending to us in advance of the conversation on the eighth?
Uh, we have a uh a detailed report that we are working on uh that we're going to get out at at a minimum, that full week in advance. Uh, that goes over all of this information in those planning toolkits. Uh, and it'll give you time to review and think through the different options that we'll be presenting. So it's a, it's a pretty detailed report that you'll get.
That's great. And I assume, I don't know why I'm on this links thing tonight, but I'm assuming there'll be links to or information. That was feedback received from the working group and from the community. Engagement process as well, so we can refer back to that and.
Uh, yes, I can, I can make sure there's links in the report. There is actually a summary of the feedback that we've heard from the public on those things.
Yeah, that's perfect. Um. Uh, that was it. Thank you.
And keep that, keep that slide up. That's what I wanted to talk about, the near term. So if I, I just want to make sure we're understanding this, are you, is this slide saying that? We're going to have a twenty minute conversation about expanding, potentially. Changing the the growth area, the criteria for that. Twenty minutes on which should be crossroad communities. And twenty minutes on how we should develop rural interchange. So. Is that, because I I could see each one of those as its own work session almost. And I I'm really questioning twenty minutes. Conversation to tackle one of some of the biggest issues that we're facing.
Um. Twenty plus minutes.
I just really, I mean, you know, I don't know if you've made the agenda, it's like a, sorry, this might actually.
This this assumes about a two-hour uh work session that evening. Um. We, like, as I said, we don't have anything else on the agenda. If we need to take additional time, we can. Uh, that's why, that is also why we're. Providing this report ahead of time, so that we're hoping that you all can, you know, have some sort of uh. Some idea of what direction you want to take it and and have some some thoughts going in, so it's not just like reacting to what you're hearing. Uh, you'll be able to have some thoughtful uh opportunities to to reflect on it ahead of time and.
Yeah, I mean, I I could just sit down, you know, by myself, talking to myself and make up what I think after I receive my planning packet. But I'm going to want to really hear a robust discussion from my fellow commissioners and have enough time. In the meeting to change my mind. Or I've become enlightened in some new way that now makes me want to go in a different direction. And I'm just suggesting to you that I just don't think twenty minutes, you know, all joking aside, twenty seven minutes isn't, I I'm really. I'll play the game, but I just, I don't think that we are giving enough time to the these important topics. For example, even just the um. The the centers, the sort of crossroads communities or whatever, I shouldn't say centers and are messing around with our vocabulary, the crossroads communities. I've heard feedback from some are like, we don't want to be one. And others are like, but we are one and they didn't mention us. And, you know, like, so that's, that's not a light topic. And what does that even mean when we say that they are those? Um, anyway, so I I'm really, I guess I would just ask. Turn to my chair and vice chair and say that I would hope that. That we don't give short shrift because, well, that's in the schedule and that's the time we had. So. We've dispensed with that topic and on to the next because we may not be able to. Complete a thorough. And thoughtful enough conversation, the time that's been allotted for these three topics. That's. How I'm reading it. If I was your facilitator, I would probably tell you it couldn't be done in that time.
I I'll also say that, you know, this is, th- this isn't the end of this discussion because.
Okay.
What the recommendations that. Because what the recommendations that, that we come out of this and you'll see those, those two or three options. That's, that's the direction we're going in. How we get there is gonna be, uh, further clarified in the goals and objectives discussions. And in the, um, the strategies or the action steps that we include in the plan. So while this is, uh, setting the direction, um, there will, there is detailed work that needs to be done. That will come in the later session. So, so just.
More of an, you're saying, you're suggesting word of an adaptive management approach where you come back. We circle back and say, we heard you, we went in this direction. This is what we came up with and, and then there may be disagreement or whatever.
Or at least on how, how we do that. This is the direction we, we get from you. This is the direction you wanna go in. How do we wanna go there? I think that's what's gonna be part of those goals and objectives and, and, and action steps. So, and, and, you know, keep in mind that we're not, you're not approving it at that time. It's not, we don't go to the board and say, is this done? We have a, we have a.
Activity centers, these are the whatevers.
Yeah, exactly. We have another year beyond that and there'll be a lot more opportunities to kind of.
I just wanna make sure things just don't just kind of go away and now we're on to the races, cuz it is a very aggressive schedule.
Sure.
And again, just to emphasize the reason that we have a consultant helping us with the facilitation is so that it focuses the conversation. Because we also can be a body that kind of just goes out into the ecosystem. And you can spend three hours, maybe unnecessarily, talking about things. And so we hear you loud and clear on that, as we talked about it not too long ago. Um, there is some flex in that schedule, but I also wanna make sure we stay focused. And again, this is not the last time we'll talk about that topic, but we hear you loud and clear. So Commissioner Kurzawa. Commissioner Missile actually took my question, but Commissioner Firehawk gave me another one. Taking reference to this topic and so. The materials that we're gonna get and you, you went to some detail on what that, those would look like. Um, can I ask that? That they begin to focus us, just to the, the point that, uh, Chair Claiborne just mentioned. Focus us and focus that conversations. So what is this piece is about? And the next meeting, we could cover some other topics. So what are we gonna be talking about the crossroads or, cuz it's, I agree with Commissioner Firehawks, if it's, let's talk about crossroads. It could be four hours and yes, you know, we'll need a lot of snacks and water. If you keep us focused and, and if we start to see that in the package. So I think that's also, it'll be important, how robust that package is. So, so I guess the other part of my question is, when are we getting the package?
Uh, as I said, I, we, we are shooting to get it to you at a minimum of, for we can advance the meeting. But we are trying to.
We keep adding things for you to add to.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi there.
Hi.
So I, I have to say, I'm, I'm pleased that I will be receiving comments about issues from the public as opposed to the public receiving comments from me. And the reason I'm saying that is that I'm struggle with what happened in Croze. And the sort of firestorm of tension that the people in Croze thought that their way was the platinum way. I'm not sort of calling it, but I just remember the tension that was there, that when we tried to shape the Croze plan. There was just, there was just, they felt like somehow they'd been disrespected. But that was never my intention. My intention was that they were offering us comments. And then we were considering the comments and then moving the comments up to the, to the board of supervisors. So that when you do speak in public, remember, if you could, to remind people that this is, that you're gathering information that's gonna go through us and eventually is gonna go to the board of supervisors. And that what they offer is not the definitive it. But it is their voice that needs to be, that is helping us to consider things. So the supervisors can create the definitive it. Um, that's one thing that I'm, I don't wanna go through what some of our former colleagues went through over the cross, Croze small area plan. Cuz I don't think people felt, I don't think the process was healthy for a bunch of people. And I, you know, I'm, I wanna enjoy my health at this particular point in time. And so the other thing that I, that I, that I think some of us are talking about here is that as a commission, we rarely get the chance to wrestle with an exchange or a dialogue among ourselves. It's more like Albemarle's Got Talent. So Judge from Rio, what did you think about condition number fourteen thirty-three? And then, right, there you go, there's X. And so I think what we're missing sometimes is the ability for us to engage amongst ourselves with you there. I mean, well, you know, we're definitely, we're not gonna put you there, we're gonna put you next to us. Um, to have that conversation about what are we trying to do here? What are we, what are we seeing? I think that's the bit that, that I, that I, that I hope that we get to do in our small, in our small group presentations over there and was it two forty-one or whatever that place is over there? Because I think the more we can get away from Albemarle's Got Talent to an exchange among us, I think you're gonna see, we're gonna feel comfortable about the process. And I think we're gonna be able to sort of help you be comfortable with the process that moves one level above us.
Any other feedback for staff?
Yeah, I would just second what you just said there. I think that that's, that's one of the things, one of the things I've talked to Commissioner Firehawk about before, a lot of the other committees that I'm on have subcommittees. I believe that's something that we could do. I don't think it's been done in a very long time. But I would personally appreciate the ability to, to form a subcommittee with some interested commissioners and talk in depth about some of these topics, so that we could bring something a little bit more prepared to some of these discussions. Um, I, I don't think that, as it was said, I, I don't think twenty minutes is, is really enough to discuss some of these really important topics without having the opportunity to at least two or three people to get together. And I understand it would be a public meeting, um, two or three people get together and talk about these in more detail.
Right. There's something we can look into.
But you, what do you wanna tell us? I've said it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. Good stuff.
Good. Thank you.
All right. All right, there's no further comments on that. We'll move to review of the board supervisors meeting, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, uh, thank you. Actually, um, there were no, uh, public hearings on the meeting, uh, from the previous, uh, board of supervisors. Uh, and, you know, a, a lot of, uh, a lot of, um, general items were covered. The one that, you know, I think maybe of some interest is that we did get a presentation, uh, did have a presentation from planning on, uh, a potential bike peda- pedestrian connection on Route twenty. This was something that we had looked at a number of years ago, trying to find a way to connect from the city, city line on Route twenty down to, uh, down to, um, the, uh, PBCC and, uh, the, the Monticello. Uh, the Monticello Trailhead area, as you might know, we have a, uh, a funded project, but a roundabout right there at Route fifty-three and Route twenty. Uh, I believe that's gonna be starting construction in just a couple of years now. Uh, and we were thinking that there's still a gap in the pedestrian connections there. Uh, the roundabout will include some pedestrian facilities, but we wanna get people safely from the city to, uh, the Monticello Trailhead. Uh, to some of the housing developments down there and a PBCC. So, uh, there was a presentation on design and I took feedback from the board of supervisors on that. Um, other than that, uh, not, not much else, I think, uh, to go over.
Thank you. Any committee reports? Yeah, what, Commissioner Firehawk?
So we did get a quorum and the historic preservation committee met. Um, and, um, what, basically what they worked on this week was, this was yesterday, uh, was do a little more work on the, um, process for submitting awards for, uh, historic preservation in different categories like commercial, small residential, large garden landscapes, et cetera. And, uh, we were advised by staff that we should not just launch an awards program, that we should wait for the comprehensive plan to be finished. I was like, let's just launch an awards program. But anyway, um, apparently, really, we should have a, uh, uh, the importance of recognizing uh, laudatory, uh, historic preservation in our comp plan and then we can have an awards program. Who knows, maybe even it would have a budget. I don't know. Um, and, and then we also talked about the historic markers as well, um, that we do have some funds. I still am not clear how much we have, but that we could have some additional historic markers, the, the county's ones that are, are the green sign. Uh, look different than the black and white signs that you see that the state puts up. Uh, so anyway, that, that sort of the process for, uh, nominating those, et cetera, is, is being clarified. I'm not clear if we also have to wait for the comp plan to be reauthorized to do that. But anyway, that's, that's in process. We're a little bit behind, uh, just because of all the missed meetings during COVID. But we are making progress on that. Um, I also went to the CAC, but I'll let, uh, Commissioner Missile, uh, report on that. So he has something fun to report on, but also because the public meeting was actually in his district, not mine.
Question, I do have a question with the Historic Resources Committee. Did, did you all discuss, instead of inventing your own program, sponsoring an award at the state level, like Preservation Virginia? Like committing to annually sponsoring a local award upward, opposed to starting your.
Didn't get that far, but I'll, I could certainly bring that to the group. Are you suggesting instead of the county having a lo- a local program or just in addition to?
Um, instead of.
Oh, I think that, uh, because we don't have an ordinance right now. We're trying to find ways to, uh, congratulate and showcase people who've done extraordinary things. Um, and we also made a strong emphasis on, not just like, I'm a multimillionaire and I was able to restore my historic plantation house. But actually, you know, like, I'm just an average Joe and by putting in some elbow grease and talking to the right people. I, I actually restored something really important culturally in our county. So I think, I think because we have, uh, we, we lack a lot of tools that we wish we had. We really wanted to have something local to try to push it.
Yeah.
Uh, it, so that, that really the, the main purpose of it would be to educate and, uh, make people aware of all, there's a lot of talent in this community. There's a tremendous amount of knowledge. Uh, but to just highlight that and, and bring it to the surface and also have something a little more dynamic. And we, we, I, we, uh, sort of jokingly at the end of the meeting, I said, at the end of every meeting, we talk about requests for demolition. And it's then we go like, okay, this is being demolished, that's sad. This is being, you know, we have no authority. And it's kind of a depressing way to end the meeting. And I suggested that should be at the beginning and then we get that out of the way and then we can talk about all the great things we wanna get done and all the things we wanna incentivize. So, um, I just, I just think that we need ways to celebrate the good stuff and to, to tout it. And possibly a budget.
Got it. Uh, thank you. Uh, any other reports?
We're all, uh, take the segue opportunity there and, um, say I also attended the Fifth and Avon Community Advisory Committee um, last Thursday and really we focused on two subjects. One, we had a presentation by, uh, staff about a parcel along the east side of Stony Ridge Road. Um, I think we, as a planning commission body, will be seeing it sometime later this month. I think they said, no, sorry, next month, eight twenty-two. Um, and it's a relatively straightforward project. Uh, it is about one point three five acres and it's a request for a special use permit to allow the construction of an independent office within a structure. Um, it actually, I think, is a music recording studio and an office. Um, so the applicant also presented to us and didn't seem like there was any, any issue with that. There was a question that was raised about potential hazmat materials and they don't believe there are any. But I think that's more information they'll provide to us.
Yeah, I think it was a, it was a strange example, if I may have, where they wanna have this recording studio to record things. But they also, they wanna have offices and those, you, you weren't allowed to have both things in this, in this industrial zoning. Like you could record music, but you'd have to go somewhere else to work on your books or have a client meeting.
I'd have to go somewhere else to do the list.
Yeah, so it, it was just so weird. The zoning was overly restrictive and it, it, it actually almost seemed a little silly. Uh, but yeah, that was, that was an interesting example of our overly, perhaps unintended consequence of our overly stringent ordinance to earlier points made by audience members.
Right. Yeah, I think we just, we just made Commissioner Vivin's point of.
Yes.
The cows and the cheese and.
Yeah.
Yeah. There was a second, um, a second subject that was raised and presented by staff, which was about the broadband focus group and it was really more of a questionnaire for us. Um, and, um, Allison with the county actually s- served the role of presenting that on behalf of Jason Influentes. Yeah, who was not there. And there were questions like, what are you finding are your greatest barriers to broadband? You know, what, what devices do you use the internet with, things like that? And I think they're collecting data, looking into that further. Um, and I think one thing that stood out was the diversity of services and the number of people that are still using Firefly, or not Firefly, but DSL.
People, yeah, it was, it was surprising how, how many problems there were.
Yeah.
In the urban ring with people not being able to get access. It, it fit the name on, I mean, Julie, we know about your problem. But I just, I, I just was, sorry, this, so I, I was surprised to hear how many people have, uh, terrible problems. Or, you know, they're talking about twenty-five, uh, who, what, like, uploaded download speeds that you might remember from a decade ago and just really couldn't stream, couldn't do a lot of things.
And the hindrance is small but impactful in the county, like for example, where you have Firefly that's being run along a, a road and they get to a railroad track and they have to stop it because there's no agreement with the railroad to go over top of the tracks. So then everybody on that side is really without.
I remember when they had the same, um, questions coming before the CCAC. And they asked the question, how many of you work from home? And everyone in the room raised their hand.
Yeah. That's it, sir.
All right, any other committee reports? No? Yeah. All right, any old or new business that we wanna bring up?
Uh, I, I just new business, I just mentioned, um, I went to the, um, APA meeting. Uh, Virginia American Planning Association Conference last week and, um, taking advantage of our planning commissioner benefit for you can go to that conference for fifty bucks. All right, so fifty bucks, everybody. I mean, that, the lunch alone was worth it. Although they, they took an hour to bring mine cuz I had a special diet and whatever. But that's what I wanna talk about. I, uh, attended a really excellent sele- uh, session on, uh, solar ordinances, utility scale solar. It was really well done. I forwarded that to some staff, Admiral County staff, to say, really take a look at that. And, um, especially Louisa County has a really robust ordinance. It's really thoughtful and a really great webpage where they have all this information and instructions and what to consider and how to apply. And, uh, I suggest, I'm not, I haven't read every detail of their ordinance, but, um, they've really thought it through. And, uh, I think it would be, behoove us to take a look at that as we update our own ordinance, because they, they've already gone through that. Uh, and, and I think that they, and they spoke to me after the session and said they, a number of examples of how they had learned. We thought this was a great idea, but now it had an unintended consequence, so we're doing it a different way. But definitely check it out. You can just Google Louisa County Solar Ordinance, uh, and check out what they've done.
Thanks for sharing that and representing us at the conference. So we're taking advantage of the rate, as you're saying. So, yeah. Any other new business or old business? The one thing I would add is, uh, as you look at your availability for the rest of the year, I know we did this in January, but sometimes calendar shift. You just kinda revisit that and let us know if there's any sessions that you won't be at between now and the end of the year in December. That would be helpful as we're, uh, trying to coordinate schedules and so forth. So, um, any items for follow-up? It's the last thing on the docket. Okay. All right, well, with that, is there a, uh, motion to adjourn until the next planning meeting, planning commission meeting, which would be our work session on August the eighth, twenty twenty-three?
The move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You wanna change your vote? All right. Getting adjourned.